We will open this meeting with the land acknowledgement. I hear an echo. Do you hear an echo?
Yes.
Okay. The land that Eureka rests on is known in the Wiat language as Jiro Gigi. Past actions by local, state, and federal governments remove the Wiat and other indigenous peoples from the land and threaten to destroy their cultural practices. The city of Eureka acknowledges the Wiat community, their elders, both past and present, as well as future generations. This acknowledgement demonstrates the city's commitment to dismantle ongoing the ongoing legacies of settler colonialism. And City Attorney Luna, do we have a report out of closed session?
Good evening, Mayor and Council. No report out of closed session tonight.
Thank you. With that, can we get a roll call, please?
Councilmember Castellano is absent. Councilmember Moulton?
Here.
Councilmember Fernandez?
Here.
Councilmember Bauer?
Here.
Councilmember Contreras Deloche?
Here.
And Mayor Burgel?
Here. And with that, would all who care to join me in the pledge of allegiance? My pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice. Someone messed with my chair again. Okay. So our first proclamation is Coastal Cleanup Month with Councilmember Bauer. Is there anyone here to receive this proclamation?
No.
Thank you.
All right. City of Eureka Proclamation in recognition of Coastal Cleanup Month, September 2024. Whereas the state of California has a varied coastline of sandy beaches, rocky shores, productive estuaries, marshes, tidal flats, urban areas, and harbors. And whereas the marine environment is one of the most valuable resources for recreation, tourism, fishing, and other coastal activities. Coastal protection is a responsibility shared by residents, the business community, and public institutions. And whereas the North Coast Environmental Center is the Humboldt County Coordinator for 2024 Coastal Cleanup Month, taking place every weekend in September, during which hundreds of people will clean beaches, rivers, streets, estuaries, and watersheds throughout Humboldt County. Collecting trash upriver and in urban areas helps prevent plastics and other debris from accumulating in oceans and marine habitats. And whereas the North Coast Environmental Center's Adopt a Beach began in Humboldt County over forty years ago and is now celebrated throughout California and around the world. Last year, Humboldt County volunteers picked up over fifteen hundred pounds of trash from our shoreline and coastal region. And whereas residents can be proud that year after year Humboldt County continues to be among the state's leaders in the number of volunteers who help keep our ocean, rivers, and coastline clean. Now, therefore, I, Scott Bauer, on behalf of Mayor Kim Burgel and the Eureka City Council, do hereby proclaim September 2024 as Coastal Cleanup Month and encourages individuals, businesses, service groups, and public institutions to safely hit the beach, streets, and watersheds to jointly promote a healthy and productive coastal environment.
Thank you, Councilmember Bauer. And next, we have a proclamation regarding Lethal Means Prevention Week. And if Linda and Steve would like to come forward? Thank you. Councilmember Fernandez?
Proclamation in recognition of Lethal Means Prevention Week, September 1st through the 7th, 2024. Whereas the city of Eureka recognizes suicide as a major public health issue which impacts citizens of all ages, backgrounds, and identities. And whereas firearms suicides account for more than half of all suicides in the United States, and eighty-five to ninety percent of suicide attempts with a firearm are fatal. And whereas the risk of suicide is increased when a firearm is present and accessible in the home. And whereas research shows temporarily removing access to lethal means, such as firearms greatly reduces the likelihood of an individual experiencing suicidal crisis, contemplating suicide. And whereas the Humboldt County Suicide and Violence Prevention Program has partnered with the Substance Use Prevention Program to create Keep It Safe, a community coalition for lethal means safety that focuses on safe storage of firearms and medications, proper locations and methods of drug disposal, and promoting community awareness about lethal means safety. And whereas members of this coalition, which include the Humboldt County Public Health's Suicide and Prevention Program, the Eureka Police Department, and several local firearms retailers, offer free access to lock boxes and cable locks to the public. And whereas we strive to create a community where we care for one another and demonstrate that care through brave and loving conversations about mental health. And whereas research shows that talking to someone about suicide does not increase their risk of completing suicide. Nine out of ten people who consider suicide do not complete it. And helping people at risk of suicide safely store firearms and medications saves lives. Now, therefore, I, Mario Fernandez, on behalf of Mayor Kim Burgel and the Eureka City Council, do hereby proclaim September 1st through the 7th, 2024, as Lethal Means Prevention Week in the city of Eureka and urge all residents to join in this observance. Yes, would you please?
Thank you, Councilmember Moulton. And would you folks like to say a few words?
Thank you very much, Mayor Burgel and council members, for the proclamation on this very important topic. We continue to work to make sure that people have sort of tools and information necessary to safely and securely store firearms, medications, and other items that may be used to attempt suicide or otherwise be dangerous within their homes. And the Keep It Safe Program, which is part of Humboldt County's Humboldt County Public Health Suicide and Violence Prevention Program, as well as the Substance Use Programs Joint Venture, makes free lock boxes for safe storage of those items available. And they can be picked up from a large number of distributors that we partner with throughout the community, as well as here at the Community Wellness Center in Eureka at 908 Seventh Street. And thank you all very much for supporting us in this initiative and making this proclamation.
Thank you. Did you want to say anything?
Thank you. I'm Linda Stansberry, and I'm the co-chair of Lethal Means Prevention Subcommittee, along with Jonathan. Thank you very much for this proclamation. I just wanted to remind everyone that September is National Suicide Prevention Month and invite you down to the Arcata Plaza on Sunday for the American Society for Suicide Prevention Annual Walk. Thank you.
Thank you so much for being here. And Jonathan, I knew your name was Jonathan. I'm sorry. I called you Steve. We do what we can. So I just have a few announcements. First off, this is super fun and great information. This weekend at Arts Alive, September 7th, our own Old Town Stewards, which we have some in the audience this evening, will be doing Cookies and Community down at the gazebo, I believe it is. Oh, we're at Corcoran Properties.
It's actually at Corcoran Real Estate.
Corcoran Real Estate. So they will come up and give us more information about the location because I can't see without my glasses on. Oh, here it is. It's 527 Third Street? Is that right? So come on down and meet our great... Is that right?
Yes. Is it okay if we say something?
During public...
Oh, sorry.
Actually, why don't you come up, Hannah? Let's just talk about it now because it's such an awesome thing that you're doing.
Very briefly, good evening, Mayor and Council. I'm Hannah, and I'm coordinating this Old Town Stewards volunteer project. We are having a Meet the Team Gathering Mixer this weekend at Arts Alive at Corcoran Icon Properties, which is on Third between F and G. So yes, I brought Corinne and Roy here tonight. They are wonderful representatives, ambassadors of Eureka. And yes, we hope we can meet you all and you can learn about our program and give us some ideas about how we can make Old Town shine. So thank you. Brought some flyers for you all.
Thank you. You did much better than I. So a couple other things with the mayor's report. So last Saturday was Overdose Awareness Day. And I want to share with you that it was a really powerful event, as it is every year. It was down at the Sam Saco Theater. As we were told last meeting, eighty-three people in our region died of overdose last year, which is unacceptable. I think it's really important to acknowledge that. Many of those people grew up here. Friends and family are from here. So these are human beings who have value and who are now gone. So that's always an important time to really honor. And I do have to say that, you know, one of the things that I really appreciated about that event was that there were people that got up and told their stories about their loved ones. And you know, that's a very powerful, and it took a lot of courage to be able to share those things. So I just want to share my appreciation for the awareness that's coming forward each and every year about this event. And not only each and every year, but a lot of the time, even every day. I attended the Visit California ribbon cutting. Councilmember Mayor Protem Castellano was able to cut the ribbon for me because I was at physical therapy, but I got to come and enjoy everybody, and it was a real great time. So thank you, Mayor Protem Castellano. And most importantly, before we move on to our next item, I just, I really want to share with you that this, we're in the silly season. We're in the crazy time, right? It's election time. But I want to remind everybody that we are a community. We are a community, and we work well together most of the time. And so we may not agree on everything, but that does not mean that we have to be disrespectful to each other. And I'm seeing so much of that around here lately. And it's really, it's heartbreaking because that's not who we are as a community. That's not the community that I grew up in. That's not the community I see when I go and when I'm out all the time. And so I would just hope that friends could be mindful. You know, I talked in my mayor's reports last week about Eureka City Schools talking about, you know, doing belonging and inclusion and all of those things, where we can create a calmer and a more safe environment. And I would hope that when we're out in the world, that we consciously make decisions and think about what we're saying to each other. Because we're not all going to agree ever, but that doesn't make us wrong or crazy or any of those things. We still have an opportunity to be kind and to be respectful. So thank you for that. And that brings us to something amazing. So first of all, I want to thank Chief Robertson for twenty-six wonderful years working with the city in Humboldt Bay Fire. He's retiring. So I bring up to you, where is he at? Interim Chief Citro. And I'm going to tell you a little bit about this guy. So Battalion Chief Citro brings over thirty years of fire and EMS experience, beginning his career at the age of fourteen as a fire explorer and reserve firefighter with the Yieldsburg Fire Department. He later relocated to Humboldt County, lucky for us, to attend Cal Poly Humboldt, where he joined the Arcata Volunteer Department, Fire Department. After earning his degree, he worked for City Ambulance of Eureka as an EMT-1 and completed his paramedic training. In 1999, he was hired as a firefighter/paramedic with the Peninsula Fire District in Lake El Salvador. A year later, he joined Humboldt Number One Fire Protection District, where he has dedicated twenty-five years, serving in various roles, including firefighter, engineer, captain, captain duty officer, and battalion chief. Citro holds a Bachelor of Arts degree in geography with a minor in geology from Cal Poly Humboldt. He is certified by the California State Board of Fire Service as a fire officer and chief officer, is a California licensed paramedic, and is a graduate of the National Fire Academy's Executive Fire Officer Program. He's been married to his wife Lori for twenty-six years. They have two adult daughters, Molly and Alyssa. He enjoys spending time with his family, traveling, and playing golf in his free time. And we are so grateful to have you, Chief. Welcome. And we would love for you to say a few words.
Sure. Thank you, Mayor Burgel, and the council for having me tonight. This is an honor to be here and to serve as the fire chief for Humboldt Bay Fire. When I started working in Eureka just about twenty-nine years ago in the emergency services here, I never thought I'd get to this point and be able to lead a great organization of men and women with Humboldt Bay Fire. It is my goal to continue what Chief Robertson has done and keep moving that forward. And I look forward to working with everybody in the city from Humboldt Bay Fire to make sure that we continue to add value to the community and improve the quality of life through all the services that we provide to the community. So thank you, Mayor. Thank you, council, for having me. And I really appreciate this opportunity, and I really look forward to it. So thank you very much. Thank you.
That's awesome. So moving forward to our public comment period. This is time for the members of the public who wish to be heard on matters that do not appear on the agenda. City Council policy is to limit each speaker to three minutes. Such time allotment or portion thereof shall not be transferred to other speakers. The public will be allowed to speak concurrently with the calling of an agenda item following the staff presentation of that item. Pursuant to the Brown Act, the city council may not take action on an item that does not appear on the agenda. And I see Mr. Graham. Hi, welcome. And I didn't say it right, did I?
Good evening, council mayor, all you guys, ladies and gentlemen. I wanted to talk about your ribbon cutting ceremony for the visiting center. That's awesome and everything, but I was looking on Lost Cust Outpost at the comments. There's a hundred and thirteen comments, and I'd say there's about three positive comments. If you're going to invite people to Eureka, you might want to do something about cleaning up the crime, needle litter, and the drug addicts. There's a tent on the waterfront trail that's actually in the path, and it's one of those big tents, like an eight-person tent. And it's like halfway on the trail, and there's stuff all around it. And it's a mess. I don't know anybody who would want to ride a bicycle through there. I mean, probably pretty scared to walk through a homeless encampment that's on the walking trail. And then they're talking about building these parking lots over there. I mean, I would never leave my car there unless I wanted my window broken out, that's for sure. So that needs to be cleaned up. You really need to do something about cleaning up the city before you invite people to come and visit here. You know, deter crime, needle litter, homeless encampments. I really think you guys could work harder to do that. I mean, that should be your number-one priority, is making the city of Eureka cleaner and safer for everybody. I guess that's about it. Thanks.
Thank you for being here. Come on up. Welcome.
Thomas Stewart, Eureka. This is from a speech last week to Eureka School Board. So it's quite, it's still relevant here. First off, for the record, I'm here tonight representing only myself. I always have. I'm not paid to be here by anybody else. I want to help, make changes. This is the school board. You are out of touch. There seems to be a hidden agenda. What is really going on? This was asked to the people present at that meeting. Who was the author of the five questions you were addressing in regards to Jacobs? The assistant superintendent acknowledged it was him. I asked that he have outside help. He said yes. No one wants their neighborhoods rezoned once they know the consequences. Jacobs could hold as many as six hundred people. Four Silver Crests could locate at that location. Jacobs properly rezoning has, anyway. The CHP had a meeting at Fort Humboldt. You really need to go back to July of last year and see what Fort Humboldt meeting entailed. It was unbelievable, the cooperation with the EPD on solving crime problems. Okay, this is evidence collected last, in July of this year. Fifty percent alcohol bottle, fifty of these, thirty-five whippets. A friend of mine called me last week and said he found a gun. I went through the property with a flashlight, and I couldn't find the gun. And just to let you know, you're giving those away for free in Eureka. A gun is slang for needle. Horse is slang for heroin. Okay, so Jacobs is never secure. He got drug dealers there at night. I was followed for three miles after I left the property. It's very scary. There was five vehicles in the parking lot, drug dealing at night. And a councilwoman that appeared at that meeting said she went door-to-door, and everyone didn't want CHP. So I'm asking anyone in front of me, is anybody collecting money for their movement for the developer? I don't see a show of hands. I believe there's fraud being taken place at city schools and also fraud here. State Attorney General's office is probably going to investigate this, and the grand jury will investigate, and I think people will go to jail. Thank you.
Thank you for being here. Welcome.
Well, my name's Danette. I'm the Chair for Recovery Happens in Humboldt. And I... I'm sorry. I felt like maybe I should leave after the conversations about us addicts. I happen to have got, I'm going to break my anonymity and become vulnerable right now. Like, last Friday, I got twenty-nine years clean and sober, and I got to... And I got to recovery, pushing a shopping cart, ninety-eight pounds with orange hair, royal blue spandex, and white cowboy boots. So recovery is possible. And, you know, if we're not part of the solution, we're part of the problem. You know, I had a conversation with somebody over the weekend about, you know, just like if we keep this in silence, we're never going to get into the solution. So my, my hope is that when I started Recovery Happens eight years ago, the first picnic had seventy-eight people there. And last year, there was over six hundred. It's hopefully to give the community a different perception of recovery because there are many people in recovery. And people that aren't in recovery need to see that there's people in recovery and that we are successful. And so I empower you to come to, we have a picnic this weekend. Everything's free. There's, there's going to be drum circle and band and hamburgers, hot dogs, and all that. Bounce house for the kids. And yeah, you know, like, we do recover, and things are possible. And as long as we act like, you know, for example, the overdoses aren't happening because, you know, we do, that's been kind of a thing. Eighty-three people. I never heard anything really about too many of them. And so if we don't start talking about it, it's going to continue. And so I'm hoping that, you know, people can come and see that there are people in recovery here and that we are trying to do something in the community to do something different. So change is, change is hopefully, you know, getting better, but it's going to take a whole city. Thank you. And there's some flyers for the event right here.
Can you tell us the location?
Oh, I'm sorry. The location is Sequoia Park. It's between twelve and four on Saturday, September seventh. And it's an awesome event. Come and join us.
Thank you. Congratulations on your time. That's incredible. Hi, welcome.
Hi.
Been a long time.
Mayor and council members, thank you for what you do. I appreciate it. I just wanted to come and I, I used to come here more regularly. It's been a while. My name's Trent. I'm a local pastor. And I wanted you guys to know that we are praying for you. Every week, multiple times, we meet, our leadership of our church, we meet, and we pray for you guys regularly. And we are asking God for wisdom, and we're making ourselves available to you in any way to pray. If you guys have an issue that you're working through with the city and you would just like to enlist some prayer support, we are here for you. And I want to read a couple things, and we're going to start coming. I'm going to commit myself to coming here at 5:30 before the council meetings and pray with whoever wants to pray until the, until the meeting starts. So I'm going to ask where the proper place to do that would be. So I'll, I'll get some information from you about that. But we're going to be here at 5:30 and praying. So I'm going to read a couple things. I know that we vote here and people get voted in and such, but I believe that there's a divine order of things. And I, I believe that everyone here, regardless of how you got here, are divinely put here by God. So I'm going to read a couple things. Daniel, one of my favorite books, Daniel 220 says, "Blessed be the name of God forever and ever to whom belong wisdom and might. He changes times and seasons. He removes kings and sets up kings, rulers, authorities. He gives wisdom to the wise and knowledge to those who have understanding. He reveals deep and hidden things. He knows what is in the darkness, and light dwells with him." He's our source of wisdom. He knows more than any of us know. He's a good source to ask. Paul said in Romans, "Let every person be subject to governing authorities, for there's no authority except from God, and those that exist have been instituted by God." That's pretty sobering. 1 Corinthians 4 says, "Moreover, it is required of stewards that they be found trustworthy." So as a representative of our city, with given authority by God, there's stewardship, and with it comes responsibility. It says, "But with me, it is very small thing that I should be judged by you or by any human court. In fact, I don't even judge myself. I'm not aware of anything against myself, but I'm not thereby acquitted. It is the Lord who judges me. Therefore, do not put judgment before the right time, before the Lord comes, who will bring to light the things that are hidden in darkness and disclose the purposes of the heart, and then will give an account to God." I wanted to leave these scriptures with you, along with my name and contact information.
Thank you, Trent. Thanks for being here. Come on up.
I'd like to kind of introduce you to a brand-new program called Old Town Stewards. And we are just exactly what that would suggest. We love Old Town. We're volunteers. We will be going, pulling shifts to show people around. We are learning more of the history that we've been studying. I live at the corner of 10th and K Street over here for the last forty years. I love Old Town. So our, our job will be to show people around. There will be, there will be a free tour program. Also to see how things are going, meet all the people that work in all the shops. You just get to be known and, and hang out in, in Old Town. Pick up some trash, call, if we see problems, you know, call authorities to bring them to, bring, nudge the guy sleeping in the doorway. It's time to get up and move on, that kind of thing. So I got this cool ball cap, and Corinne got one too, but she didn't wear it. It's all of her...
Oh, thank you. What a gentleman, huh?
Kind of nice.
Alrighty. So since, my name is Corinne, volunteer Old Town Stewards. Since I am known to use ten words when one will do, I thought I would just quickly read the press release from the city. But before I get started, I would, I would like to say, good evening, Madam Mayor and Council, and thank you, Madam Mayor, for attending our kickoff meeting earlier in August. Greeting and meeting, each one of us. Thank you. That meant a lot to us. So let me just read what the, the press release that motivated me to, I guess was pick up the phone and call Hannah. Uplift Eureka announces the launch of Old Town Stewards Volunteer Program, inviting passionate individuals to join as community ambassadors in Eureka's historic Old Town. Modeled after successful ambassador programs in other cities, Arcata has one. And the last time I was in San Francisco, the night before having elective surgery at UCSF, I put some money in my parking meter and was kind of walking around Chinatown, and a gentleman approached me, and it must have looked like I needed a good meal. That was a few years ago. So he directed me to the Tonga Room at the, at the, at the Fairmont Hotel. We had a lovely evening. So just to finish with this... So just to finish with this, volunteer stewards will engage in various activities, including greeting community members and visitors, providing directions and recommendations, collaborating with local businesses and participating in beautification projects such as landscaping and litter cleanup. So each, I think right now there's between six, six or eight stewards and we are very, very fortunate. A new steward, this Rhodes Scholar, actually people pay about $2,500 to come to Eureka for a week of a day at Prairie Creek, a day at the Arcata Marsh, a day, a day trip around Old Town. And so one of our stewards, Elliot, is a paid tour guide for Rhodes Scholar. So
We're free.
Yeah, we're free. We're free. He's free too when he's, when, when he's an Old Town steward. But I personally, we all know that the business community is the lifeblood of the city and county. Without their tax pay, tax base, I don't think there'd be much of a city to, to govern. I personally am going to carry a three ring binder, a tabbed three ring binder. And just as Roy said, we're going to be doing historic tours. We are, we are going to, once we really get up and going and our Rhodes Scholar gives us his tour, his professional tour, so we can really, I mean, we can checkbooks out of the library and all that. But he's going to give us, he's going to give us the $2,500 tour for nothing. Okay, hopefully this week. So I personally am calling on the businesses, the restaurants, the boutiques, the bookstores. And I'm going to carry a tabbed three ring binder. So as we're walking along or perhaps at the end of the tour, when we wind up at the Clark Museum or the Visitor Center, which has the nicest bathroom in town, by the way, and, and somebody says, gee, you know, we're here for a couple of days. Where can we go to happy hour? Where can we go here? So I'm going to just whip out, oh, one or two suggestions, the Green Lily, obviously Lost Coast Brewery and bookstores and things like that. And I think especially for the holiday season, let's say October, November, December, we're going to be the ambassador to the business community. So for that. Thank you very much for your time. And if anyone knows a business or has a business and you'd like to be, be in the binder. That's what I say. Be in the binder.
We appreciate you. Thanks so much. Come on up. Welcome.
Hi, my name's Cecily Reel. Cecily is historically hard to pronounce, so I'm mostly known as Cece for real. I am on the board for the Recovery Happens picnic as well. Last year I went to the Recovery Happens picnic as a member in recovery and this year I am on the board. And what Dinette forgot to mention is it's a chili cookoff and you get like a little trophy and stuff. So yeah, if you guys like making chili or just want like a cool trophy or just want to come see like how recovery is possible, like it may not directly affect you, but you may know someone that it does affect. So like you may have like kids in your life or young adults or other adults that are struggling with addiction or things of that sort. And it like spans many different ways of recovery. So like there's many roads to recovering. And so like all that stuff gets to be in one place and it's super funny and it's like family oriented too because the, the disease of addiction does affect everyone in the family, not just the individual. And it affects the people in our community and so on and so forth. So if we went that way and worked backwards, it would really help the members in the community that struggle with addiction. But yep, that's all I got. Thank you.
Thank you, Cece. Hi, Mr. Par. Welcome.
Yeah, good to see y'all. It's very interesting coming in tonight. I believe that just as your proclamation against derogatory and obscene language was immediately negated by one of you calling a citizen an asshole and by your oh shit shit comments, I take it that the rule against clapping that has been, it was a pretty tyrannical rule and unevenly enforced. I take it that rule is now negated by you leading
My mistake. Yeah, my mistake.
Yeah, well, thank you for making that mistake because now it's wide open. We can clap. Other than that,
Knock yourself out.
What I came down for is kind of disturbing me that my council member has been, I mean, you guys were elected to represent us and you're not elected to be the city's Gestapo and tell us what we need and then give it to us good and hard. You're elected to represent us, all of us, not just the ones that you like, but all of us. And one certain council member's activities lately regarding Measure F not only go against that, but are questionably legal. Maybe you should reexamine your position and the reason why you're there and think about doing your job a little bit better. You don't just represent the people that you like. You represent everyone. You should act like it.
Thank you, Mr. Par. Welcome.
Good evening, Mayor, Council and staff. I just wanted to take an opportunity to introduce myself. My name's Kenny Carswell. I am running for Ward 2 of Eureka City Council. My family has lived in Ward 2 and continues to live in Ward 2 since the 60s. I have personally lived in Eureka my entire life and 27 years I have lived either in Ward 2 or within blocks of Ward 2. So I have very fond memories of that area of Eureka, lots of generational friendships. My roots are planted here. I love Eureka. I've been doing some door knocking. My number one priority right now is to really get the consensus of what the citizens of Ward 2 are wanting and honestly, the entirety of Eureka as well. I look forward to further door knocking and having conversations with people. That's something I plan on continuing if elected and really I'm just excited for the opportunity to represent the people of Ward 2 and the people of Eureka. I'm a hardworking guy. You ask anyone about me, they know that I'm goal oriented and a doer. So anyways, just want to introduce myself and appreciate the time tonight, guys.
Thank you, Kenny. Welcome, Mr. Lowenstein.
That's what we need, some fresh blood and competent blood up there, right? So but the main priority for everyone who's serving the city should be to make Eureka safe again. There is just no doubt about that we have a crime epidemic of biblical proportions, especially if you look at property crimes. And that comes along with a drug, a drop, a drug epidemic. I applaud people in recovery. I've been a recovering addict for a long time in my past and I can only say that stigma works. I can only say that addressing the issue works, that it's not okay to coddle and look the other way, but it's important to call the issues out and they are the most pressing issues that plague this community. They are called the national opioid epidemic and its fallout. And people have to acknowledge that we had programs and continue to have programs in the city like Hatcher that have proven to fail the community from the get go and people refuse to take political accountability for that. By the way, talking about political accountability, bragging about falsifying ballots is a bad, bad deal.
Focus on the full council, Mr. Lowenstein. We're not going to call out different council members. You can, you can talk to the full.
Okay, then I can tell you that it's a bad deal to brag online to falsify Measure F ballots by volunteers. It's also a bad idea to run unopposed and after having two terrible terms as a city council member, losing your bid, losing your bid at the Board of Supervisor, losing a constitutional lawsuit, then running unopposed and raining over the heads of the people in cold blood. The implications of your failed policies will outlast your terms on your, in your offices for decades to come. Eureka is a failing community and there are people that will be held politically accountable and whose legacy will be that they've been henchmen and henchmen of this town. Make Eureka safe again. Step up to the plate or step aside, you freaking corrupt reinas.
Thank you, Mr. Lowenstein. Do we have anybody else in the audience who'd like to comment? That's a hard one to follow. So looking online, it looks like we have Philip.
Thank you. I'd like to thank council for their continued leadership and steadfast progress toward the 2040 general plan. And just know, know that not all of us are fuming. Thank you.
Patty? Welcome, Patty.
Hey, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. Hi, council. I just wanted to say I'm really disappointed in all of the actions by the F no members. Does you need something, Mario? I don't know if you're mimicking, are you mimicking or pointing at someone else?
No, you were asking if you, if you could be heard and I was giving a thumbs up.
Okay, thanks.
Please direct your comments to the full council. Thank you.
I am. Thank you. I had a door knocker at my door last weekend and she was the sweetest thing ever and she's doing her job and she was explaining Measure F. And I said, after her, I listened to her, I said, thank you. We are definitely supporting Measure F. And she got the biggest smile on her face and she almost cried because for four blocks she had been yelled at. She had had flyers knocked out of her hand. She had had the door slammed in her face. And I do think that this behavior is being perpetuated by specifically one of the council members. It's obvious by her posts online that, that she wants this kind of action. I'm not so sure y'all aren't having meetings and have it staged because a lot of the things that are being said to these door knockers are all the same. It's the same, it's the same script. So you all support it. We see that. We see your name on the list. But do you really support this kind of action in our community? Because it's pretty horrible. And I would hope to think that you just don't know how horrible it is, but now you do and it's officially on record. So we can all do better and I hope that you guys can lead by example, by making sure that the no people do better. Thank you.
Thanks for being here, Patty. Do you see anyone else? Anyone else on Zoom that would like to comment? I see no one. Okay, seeing no one, we'll move on to the consent calendar.
Um, Mayor?
Yes.
Just one moment. Councilmember Castellano has decided to join from home via Zoom. And so with that, we will need a, Councilmember Castellano, if you can unmute and give us your reason for an excuse to participate through teleconference.
Yeah, hi, I have COVID, but I, I was, I would like to be present via teleconference. I can't start my video for some reason, but that's fine. But I'm here.
Thank you.
Great.
And council, I would need a motion to allow Councilmember Castellano to participate through teleconference in a second.
I'll move to approve the attendance of Councilmember Castellano virtually.
Second.
Thank you, Councilmember Bauer. Please vote.
Unanimous yes vote, motion carries.
Thank you. Welcome. Okay, that will lead us to the consent calendar. All matters listed under this category are considered to be routine by the city council and will be enacted by one motion. Pursuant to City Council Resolution 2011-22, if a member of the public would like an item on the consent calendar polled and discussed separately, this request shall be made to a council member prior to the meeting unless a specific request is made by a council member. The consent calendar will not be read. There will be no separate discussion of these items. Did I have a potential item that was being pulled? Is that still being pulled? Okay, so we are going to be having F5 be, be pulled, the Local Housing Trust Fund. Are there, is there anything further? Can we get a motion to approve the balance of the consent calendar?
Motion to approve the consent calendar minus item F5.
Second.
Okay, please vote.
Wait, wait, put your votes back up. Thank you. Councilmember Castellano abstains for yes votes, motion car, oh, sorry. Council, Castellano voted yes, five yes votes, motion carries.
Thank you. And so, let's see, Director Millar.
Good evening. I did not prepare a presentation on this item, but I'm happy to answer any questions about it.
Councilmember Fernandez?
Yeah, it's less any questions and just wanting to make sure that this was announced publicly, that this is something that we're moving forward with, something I'm very excited about that we've been talking about now for, well, I've been on council for almost 18 months. So yeah, I just hope you can tell us a little more about it, how it's going to work and.
So the item tonight is simply to be able to submit an application. The NOFA was announced in July and the window, or the application window closes on September 17th. So attached with this item is a resolution that will allow us to submit an application. They estimate that the awards will be announced in December. So if we are successful, we plan to release a NOFA, a local NOFA, early 2025, hopefully January. And the purpose of that NOFA is to fund the development of ADUs or accessory dwelling units. That is the program that we're requesting or the funds that we're requesting, the matching funds of half a million dollars would be used for that purpose, at least initially. And then in the future, we could add or take away programs. But you know, our goal is to get the ADU program off the ground by utilizing this funding source.
Now, and that's, and that's what I'm excited to hear about is that there's still not so much an alternative, but that, well, I, I guess there is to not just the development projects that we have in the pipes, but for the opportunity for local folks to create at least some sort of housing on existing property that they have. And I know I've talked with city manager Slattery about the potential for renters to utilize this fund to make improvements that existing property owners might not be able to make. And so that's something I wanted to have folks be aware of as well. The potential for that, if we're awarded this funding.
Correct. And I just want to note that the motivation behind the program that we chose was based on what's in the housing element. So the second strategy is to encourage or incentivize the creation of accessory dwelling units. And that's because, you know, we're a built out city and most of our zoning is single family residences. So with the new local laws and state laws, one of our best opportunities is to utilize, I think there are 5,000 different parcels that could all have at least one ADU, if not multiple. Thank you.
Are there any further questions? Councilmember Castellano?
Thank you. And just to, just so I'm correct, even, I mean, one, I'm super excited for this, but you know, my understanding is this will add, allow us to amplify a program that we have already kind of brought before council and are planning to move forward with. And that those ADUs, were they to be funded by the city, they would be, I know it's not specific to this grant, but they would need to be kind of kept as affordable or, you know, rented to people within the 30% AMI.
So yeah, this is kind of the biggest funding source or the main funding source of the ADU program called Eureka Builds It. And the monies would have to be allocated to different income categories. 30% below area median income or AMI is one category. I believe that they would receive 25% of the Housing Trust Fund allocation of a million dollars. Another roughly 30% would go to 60% area median income. And then the remainder would be used for 80% and 120% below AMI. And then we will continue to look for outside funding sources so that we can essentially provide opportunities for all income sources as well as enhance the, the monies available at the lower levels as well.
Thank you. Any further questions? Seeing none, we'll open this item up to public comment. Is there anyone from the public who would like to comment on this item? Do you see anybody online, Shane? I see no one online. Seeing no one, we'll bring it back to council for a motion and a vote.
Yeah, I'm just trying to figure out, can I make it as simple as approving? Yeah, I'll move staff recommendation.
Second.
Thank you, Councilmember Bauer. Motion is seconded. Please vote. Thank you, Councilmember Bauer. Motion seconded, please vote.
Councilmember Castellano?
Aye.
Unanimous yes vote, motion carries.
Thank you. Does anyone have any legislative action correspondence? Okay, seeing none, we'll move forward to ordinances and resolutions. City of Eureka's corporation yard property surplus with Director Kenyon. Welcome.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Looks like IT's figuring it out for me. Awesome. Uh, so tonight for your consideration is a resolution to declare the city's corporation yard on West Fourteenth Street as surplus land under the Surplus Land Act. Okay. There we go. So, um, this site is located in the northwest quadrant of the city, west of Broadway in the coastal zone. Um, zooming in closer, you can see the site is located on the southern side of West Fourteenth Street, north of West Fifteenth, west of Short, and east of Railroad Avenue. And this area of the city is highly concentrated with industrial uses and is known as our west side industrial district. Here is the site from West Fourteenth Street looking south. Um, Director Gerving and others have presented to the council multiple times now about the reasoning for moving this, um, corp yard, so I won't go into detail tonight, but basically the site has been used as a corporation yard since the nineteen fifties. It has aging infrastructure and I think the biggest issue is that it stores critical equipment that we need for emergency events, but it's located in a hazardous area, uh, that could be compromised when we have an emergency. Um, I found this old US Coast Survey map from eighteen seventy, um, showing kind of why it's a hazardous area. It used to be tied lands and that's why it's subject to liquefaction and tsunamis and future flooding with sea level rise. Um, so as a result, the city's facilities master plan and the Humboldt County Operational Area Hazard Mitigation Plan, both have goals of relocating and redeveloping the corp yard to ensure efficient operations during a natural disaster. Um, the city has recently acquired a 5.6 acre site on a bluff above and east of Highway 101 between Ocean View Cemetery Drive and Sunset Street, where the corp yard's functions, employees, and all associated equipment will be relocated. Uh, quick download on the Surplus Land Act process. If council declares the property surplus tonight, the city first is required by the Surplus Land Act to notice the availability of the land for affordable housing and open space purposes for a sixty day period. Um, the act is kind of a right of first refusal, refusal. Um, and if no one responds to that notice or if the city does not agree to a price or terms with an interested affordable housing or open space entity during a subsequent ninety day good faith negotiation period, the city has a discretion to sell or lease to an entity of the city's choosing. Ultimately, it'll be brought back to council, um, with the, to negotiate the terms and determine what best serves the interests of the community. Uh, it's important to note, the site is in the public facility zoning district surrounded by industrial zone land where residences are not permitted and a local coastal program amendment would be required to rezone the site to allow for affordable housing. Nevertheless, the city is still required to comply with the Surplus Land Act requirements to first notice and negotiate with affordable housing developers. Any future redevelopment and use of the site will more than likely require a subsequent city discretionary review, which will also trigger a subsequent SEQA review and likely the potential, likely the need for an environmental document. Um, I think the only situation where the future use of the site, uh, wouldn't need additional city discretionary review is if it was something that's principally permitted in the existing public facility zoning district and they were using the existing structures on site and not building new stuff. Um, so the city's policies and procedures on the sale of city owned property requires planning commission to review the surplus proposal. And they did that at a notice public hearing on August fourteenth. And they unanimously with, with one commissioner absent, recommended surplus after finding that the property is not necessary for city use. Its size and shape are adequate for development of permitted uses and the location, purpose, and extent of the disposition is consistent with the general plan. The planning commission staff report findings have been included as an attachment in your agenda packet. So as discussed in the agenda summary, staff believes the necessary findings can be made to surplus the land and therefore recommends that council adopt a resolution, finding the surplus exempt from SEQA and declaring the corp yard property surplus land. And I have a recommended motion, but I will stop sharing my screen.
Do we have any questions? Councilmember Contreras Deloche.
I was just curious, um, as you were, uh, going over the reasons why, um, you know, going back to that old map and, um, some of the reasons why the current corp yard is not a good location for a corp yard. Um, in, in talking about, you know, potential liquefaction and, you know, also, um, sorry, uh, subsidence and, you know, uh, sea rise and that kind of thing. What are the types of requirements then, or are there any requirements for us as a city before we discharge a property that we have deemed to not be so fabulous environmentally? I'm just curi-, I'm, you know, just curious, we are giving this list of why we need to move. So how does that work when you're, uh, discharging or, uh, releasing it for sale?
So, I.
I think during subsequent environmental review, we would, you would look at, one of the things you look at under SEQA is, is how the project may exacerbate hazard conditions. And in this case, you know, it's a essential, critical city facility. And so that's the last thing you want in a hazardous zone. Um, you'd want, you want less intense or uses or you just, there's other uses that would be better for this zone than, but it's still a usable site. It's just not appropriate. You want your essential and critical facilities in the safest location possible, you know, when you're thinking about where you locate what.
We have a duty to notice and we're doing that now as a part of this process, but what Director Kenyon is getting at is right now we have an emergency operations plan. If we were to have a tsunami or a cascade event that's really close in proximity, the idea is to go to the corp yard, grab all of our essential equipment and move it up to the Eureka Mall. So that process in and of itself makes your response inadequate. And so we've had that as our emergency operations plan since we've had a corp yard there because we didn't have it at another location. So we've always been looking for an alternative location because of that, for our ability to respond to natural disasters.
Thank you. I really appreciate that. Can I follow up? Um, I appreciate that explanation too, I think, for, you know, anybody in the community that's, um, tuning in as well to understand why it needs to be moved. I am curious, so there's no, so with the, uh, sorry, uh, surplus, surplus land act law, they don't, they just say this always needs to be released for housing first, irregardless of what the history is of that site or its suitability, it just automatically is triggered?
There are a list of exemptions that would exempt you from having to notice it for affordable housing, but it explicitly says. And one of those is like, if there is an easement that prevents it, that's imposed on it that the city has no control over, like, uh, a restriction on future use as residential because of some contamination issue, but, um, it specifically says zoning is not, is city imposed and therefore it can't be used as a reason to not put it up for affordable housing. What it's missing with saying that is that in this case, in the coastal zone, we don't really have a hundred percent control of our zoning because everything has to get certified by the coastal commission. But they're okay with when we notice it, explaining all of the details of the property. So when we go out to notice it for affordable housing, we're going to be upfront about its current zoning and where it's located.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Any questions from up there? Seeing none? Okay, well, with that, we'll open this item up for public comment. Is there anybody in chambers who'd like to comment on this item? Seeing no one, uh, do you see anyone on Zoom?
I see no one on Zoom.
Okay, so with that, we'll close the public comment and bring it back to council for comments and a motion. Councilmember Bauer?
I'll motion, uh, to, uh, adopt a resolution of the city council finding the surplus exempt, this just says surplus, but the surplus property exempt from SEQA and declaring the corp yard property located at nine forty-five West Fourteenth Street a surplus land.
Second. Great, we have a motion in a second and a comment from Councilmember Castellano.
Thanks, uh, totally support this. I just want to say, uh, uh, for the public who hasn't looked at the zoning map, this is, uh, one, uh, you know, single parcel of P zoning surrounding by, I believe, MG zoning, uh, which is the more like commercial, industrial. And, um, I do think, uh, it's worth considering when we update our local coastal plan to kind of find more cohesive zoning for that area, um, just so that, um, you know, I know, I know we don't quite need to do that right now, but I just sense it's kind of about this parcel. Um, just in order to kind of create like better planning for, for that area.
Okay, thank you. We have a motion in a second, please vote.
Councilmember Castellano?
Aye.
Unanimous yes vote, motion carries.
Thank you. This moves us to our vacant building ordinance with City Attorney, City Attorney Luna.
Good evening again, Mayor and Council. This ordinance is before you tonight for possible adoption. It was introduced on August twentieth. And at that August twentieth meeting, there were some suggestions made for, uh, small changes to the ordinance prior to introduction. And in my agenda summary, it says that the changes are in red in your agenda. And I apologize, they are not in red. So that's why you have in front of you another copy with the small changes in red. Uh, there are also copies for the public, uh, out on the table. Anybody who's interested in seeing those changes can pick up a copy out there. And just for the record, uh, because of that oversight, I want to go through, uh, the changes very quickly here. In section one five zero point oh nine seven, uh, B, we had a change, uh, from thirty days to ninety days in that section. And you should see that in red, uh, on the versions that you have in front of you. And again, anybody here can, uh, pick up a copy. Moving to page three, uh, section oh five, one five oh oh nine eight, E four, a change from thirty days to sixty days. And five, a change from thirty days to sixty days. Moving on to page five of the ordinance, one five zero point oh nine nine A. We crossed out here, uh, based on the suggestions from council last time. Again, all of these are, are changes that were made prior to introduction last time and are reflected here in this, uh, in this ordinance draft today. Uh, we crossed out in an amount not to exceed and simply, uh, made it a thousand dollars. These are in the costs and penalties portion. Also in this portion, we have it changed from thirty days to sixty days. Moving on to the last page, uh, similar change was made in number two and number three was struck completely. Uh, just by way of brief explanation here, in the fines and penalties portion prior, uh, to introduction, there was some leeway given in the draft that was, uh, presented to you prior to introduction in the administrative penalty, uh, amount. And it was suggested by council and I agreed that, uh, that flexibility wasn't necessary or appropriate in this case, so we removed it. Uh, and then finally, under appeal, we've changed, uh, this is one five zero point one hundred. We've made a change from fifteen days to thirty days. And we've added here that anyone, uh, who has appealed a decision and gotten a decision subsequently from the city manager that they disagree with, they, they now have the right to bring this to council, uh, as a subsequent appeal. And so that's added as the very final paragraph. And those are all of the changes that were made, again, prior to introduction last time and per council's direction. Uh, beyond that, uh, this ordinance has been in front of boards. This is, I believe, the fourth time we've had public discussion of the item. And so, uh, I will open this up for questions from council.
Do we have any questions for City Attorney Luna? Councilmember Bauer?
I, I'm not sure this is for City Attorney Luna. Um, I don't remember if we discussed or, um, asked what the impact was on staff. What is this going to require to have this ordinance in place?
I think Director Gerving could come and answer this, but I'll give a shot at it. Um, we currently have a vacant and boarded ordinance, so there is, there, there are properties listed that we monitor and we assess fines and, and those type of things. This will likely add to that. Um, I don't know, you know, I'll, I'll let Director Gerving say how much, but I mean, there is a process in place where we're already doing that. Um, this is something that code enforcement already does. Um, and you guys have heard some of those cases, whether it be in closed session or other things about those. And so it's, it's something that exists now. It's not something new. Um, depending on, you know, a lot of this is going to be complaint driven. And so depending on what that looks like and how many properties, it's hard to predict what, you know, the amount of, um, more properties, but Director Gerving can add.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Uh, everything the city manager said is correct. We do have a vacant and boarded building section in the municipal code right now that, um, provides for monitoring fees, quarterly inspections of those properties and that kind of thing. This would add to that load, uh, on our code enforcement staff in the form of, uh, coordinating with property owners on the vacant building plan, uh, monitoring that, making sure that property owners are keeping up with it. So it is another, uh, set of regulations to enforce. Uh, but just like the rest of the municipal code, we will do our best to do that and, uh, address things as complaints come in.
Quick, quick follow-up question. I mean, code, code enforcement are the experts, I think, do the stuff every day. Does staff think this will be effective at transforming what I think a belief is, or, you know, some, our conception that this ordinance will increase, you know, um, occupancy?
Speaking on behalf of my staff, um, and working through enforcement issues on a daily basis, you know, these, these four people are, are coordinating anywhere between six and eight hundred code enforcement cases per year. Adding anything to that caseload, um, is a bit of a concern for me. However, um, if it's going to achieve something meaningful, that's great. I don't know that these new provisions would get at the root causes of those vacancies. I don't know that this is the best tool for that. But if it's what council is asking staff to do, then we'll certainly do it.
Thank you.
Councilmember Contreras Deloche?
Before you go, you said, "I don't know if this is the best tool for that, but if this is what council wishes." Is there a better tool for this?
That's the harder question to answer. And I, I don't know that there is a better tool. I don't, I don't know that this is the right one, but I can't offer up an alternative at this point. Because I don't know that we have, at least, again, speaking on behalf of my staff, I don't know that we have the right data on what the root causes of all these vacancies are.
Yeah, I'm wondering about that as well. Thank you.
Councilmember Castellano?
Hi, um, this might be a, a question for, uh, City Attorney Luna, but whoever feels like they have the expertise, just in terms of, you know, this as a, kind of a newer, a new ordinance or a slightly new approach. You know, let's, let's say we try something and it's not perfect, but we learn something from it and we then want to bring it back and make changes. What would that process be? What would that process be? Yes, maybe that's all the questions I have.
Thank you, Member, Councilmember Castellano. In many respects, that's what we're doing now. Because we have an existing vacant and/or boarded buildings ordinance that's been in place for a while, we have learned from that, and I think that what we're doing now, the process we're going through, is trying to build off of what we have learned, and we hope to make it better with this version. Any future version, any future changes, go through the same process. You know, modifications based on what we've learned, and we bring that back to council for, you know, likely not another repeal and replace, but minor adjustments to ordinances are made all the time, and we can certainly do that at any time. The process to change an ordinance is exactly this, introduce and adopt.
Thank you. Okay, seeing no more questions, thank you, Public Works Director Gervin. Seeing no questions, we'll open this item up for public comment. Is there anyone from the public who'd like to comment on this item? Seeing no one, we'll bring it over to the phone. And we've got a phone number up there. Phone number ending in 2841.
Good evening. I have been watching this ordinance with interest, and I'm reminded that council previously has addressed empty buildings, not only in our city, but other cities, by saying, "It's this way everywhere." And I'm wondering how you can force someone to rent a building that they've been unable to rent. I agree with keeping the building secure, safe, clean, the landscaping done. All of these things are necessary to prevent the furtherance of the broken windows theory where this building is blighted and the next one becomes blighted. I believe that it's important to keep things clean and orderly, but I have to wonder about forcing people to rent out their property. I don't know that you can tell someone what they must do with their property. That's like saying, "I must drive my car," or "I must ride my bicycle." I don't think that it is productive to demand that real estate be returned to use when there is so much lack of interest in the space being utilized. And it's not just in this city, it's a lot of other places. You might do better to incentivize property owners rather than demand and fine, and hopefully you can figure out a way out of it where it's not just the business district that you're demanding now. The next day it will become, "You must rent out the vacant house." Thank you.
Thank you, Judy. And it looks like Raylena?
Hi, good evening tonight. My name is Raylena Crickson. I am newly, a new building owner in Eureka, and I'm proud to be able to say that. I've been watching the vacant building ordinance come through Economic Development, Land and Commission, and now City Council, and I would like to express my support for it. It's a proactive and essential measure for our community's development. And as mentioned by staff, you know, this is one tool in a toolbox that addresses some of the most egregious issues that our current ordinances have been ineffective in, you know, improving. And that's something important to recognize. You know, this isn't a draconian or punitive measure, but it's just one tool in a suite of tools that can be used to help to increase our neighborhoods, you know, curb ongoing blight and fostering a more attractive and inviting environment overall. When you have active commercial spaces, these serve as community hubs for hosting events and gatherings that further bring our communities together. As part of the team that organizes Friday Night Market, I can see firsthand how hosting and holding space for these kinds of community engagements really makes great things happen. You know, for example, one of our, several of our nights have gone towards supporting local nonprofits, but we do live in a temperate area, and, you know, there's so many of these commercial spaces that go vacant that, you know, potentially could be used during winter months. Furthermore, this ordinance, you know, will help to enhance safety by reducing the risks associated with vacant buildings, which can attract vandalism and criminal activities. But by ensuring our properties are well-maintained and occupied, it just contributes to a safer and more secure community. The fact that we have a previous draft and we have a new ordinance, I think it's important to listen to what we have learned from the past and bring that into the future. To maximize the benefits of this ordinance, I would encourage council to support using the associated fines and fees to be allocated towards the local housing trust fund or funds dedicated to helping business owners improve their building frontages, like SEP-10. This approach, you know, enhances our community engagement and supports our economic growth, but it also ensures that the financial penalties from vacancies are reinvested into meaningful local improvements. Pulling the teeth of this ordinance by decreasing fines and timelines only dulls the future effectiveness.
Thank you, Raylena, we appreciate you being here.
Thank you.
Mm-hmm, do you see anyone else?
I see no one else.
Okay, seeing no one else, we'll bring it back. Oh, we have someone in the audience? Hi, welcome.
I'm a visitor, but I couldn't refrain from speaking on something that I have a very, a lot of research done on a lot of this topic. So when we're dealing with the government, it said in the Constitution, in the Federalist Papers, that government governs best, which governs least. So the least amount of government regulation, the best. Now, right now, you have neighbors like all over California, San Diego, San Francisco, who believe the exact opposite of this, and as you can tell, their cities are a big mess. So I, you know, I am firmly in favor of, also, I think we should remember that Karl Marx and communism, their whole thing is government control of private industry. So if you apply that principle to this, we see that if a government forces someone, and I understand, I get it, you know, vacancy, crime, and all, that's a bad thing. We, I think all of us oppose that. However, let the private market solve its problems. Now, we're dealing with a much bigger problem than this, because this whole real estate and housing issues, it's all tied to money, which it's not central to here, but it affects every single city in America, and it's central in New York. Because the Federal Reserve controls all of us with the income tax. And the Federal Reserve, they just get to print money out of anything, and if you and I did that, we go to jail. But that's behind all of this. We have to be cognizant of that, because it's all about central power. One small group wants to control everything, and I can't even say their name, or I'm going to catch tremendous flak. So I think it's very wise to be understanding of that and resist with everything within our power, the spreading of the government. I've never heard anybody talk about reducing taxes and reducing government oversight, but yet that's the solution to the problems that we're dealing with right now. So I appreciate the comments of the first speaker, who talked about, "Let's not force citizens." She's right. I mean, do you force a citizen to buy a house? Do you force someone to drive their car? Do you force, hey, it's safer for us if we get to put GPS trackers in every single car. Does that mean that's what we do? Do we just violate everybody's privacy like that? So personal, private property rights are essential. We absolutely must protect those with everything that we have, because if we lose personal property protection rights, this nation, as it stood for 250 years, is over, and we're headed there right now. We are headed there, we're dangerously close. That's all I have, but thank you for your time.
Thanks for being here. So last call for public comment. Seeing no one, we'll bring it back to council for comments and a motion. Did you want to comment? Councilmember Fernandez? Oh, okay. Councilmember Fernandez, you want to go first and then we'll, okay, Councilmember Castellano?
All right, yeah, let's see, so, you know, as City Attorney Luna stated, we have had, you know, several opportunities to speak on this already. I just want to say that I've heard from several business owners in the last couple of days who are very supportive of this. They really, you know, and just to be honest, I think they're frustrated because they are working really hard to maintain their business and to do a good job, and they just feel that, you know, kind of the number of vacancies, especially along the 101 corridor, that was cited specifically, actually kind of keep people from going into Old Town when people drive through. They feel like that sends a signal that there aren't businesses operating in Old Town. And so I think, you know, in the spirit of trying something out and learning from what we try, I completely support this. Also, just there are a couple, little bits of misinformation. If the building, according to this ordinance, and I think something, it's something we might want to question or think about in the future, you know, if a building is actively for rent and in good, or in good faith, available for sale, lease, or rent, it will not be fined. So I just want to make sure folks are clear on that. And it does also apply to housing, so those things are included in this particular ordinance.
Thank you. Okay, Councilmember Fernandez. Councilmember Contreras Deloche? No, go ahead.
Okay, so I, you know, also acknowledging that, you know, a number of businesses, in fact, and while we've been sitting here, we've received a couple of emails from people who've wanted to weigh in on that. So I just want to note that we have public comments that have come in on our emails as well, talking about this issue and also saying that they support this. So acknowledging that businesses support this and why they do, and the problems that there is with having, you know, vacant. I, so I still have a number of things that concern me about this. And one is, I'm curious how we calculated the fee. You know, in the document, we're talking about the extensive cost to staff, and since we haven't actually done this before, I'm wondering how we came up with that fee, that amount.
You're talking about the fine?
Yes.
Yeah, just again, so everybody remembers, this is for the public. The fee for monitoring will be set in the fee schedule. The fine is set by the ordinance, so there is a difference. And I've had a lot of questions about that, so I just want to make sure that everybody knows what we're talking about. Councilmember Contreras Deloche, you're talking about the civil fines and penalties, which are, sorry, under section 099, Civil Remedy, is that correct?
Yeah, the $1,000 per month, yes. So the fine, the cost and penalty, okay.
Yeah.
Yeah, I'm wondering how that was calculated.
I mean, fines of that amount are not uncommon or unheard of, even in our existing code for other purposes. So in many respects, they came from those examples elsewhere in the code, so.
And those, and do we have an idea of how those were calculated? I'm just, I still want to understand how these are calculated.
Previous councils have authorized them. I don't think it's a calculation. The fine is intended to be punitive. So it's not a calculation based on our work or how much it costs. Those are the fees. How much it costs, we recover in fees. Fines are intended to be an amount that is enough to discourage people from violating the law.
I appreciate that, I think, because, you know, a couple of council members have said this isn't intended to be a punitive, so I appreciate you saying that it is, because that's the way I read it as well, this is intended to be punitive.
Fines, yes.
That's part of my concern with it. So one of the other things I, you know, going under, excuse me, let me look really quick, on 098. So most of these, I think, are good, but I have concerns about a few of them. Five, or V being one of them, the period of time the building is expected to remain vacant. That is, anybody who has ever leased or rented anything knows that that is entirely unpredictable. So I'm concerned that they are going to be required to try to crystal ball when they think that they would be able to lease something. I'm also concerned about seven, two more down, VI. The owner plan giving a, I find this to be difficult to predict as well. If the owner plans on returning the building to a lawful occupancy use, the estimated date for returning the building to a lawful occupancy and use. Again, I think that that is difficult, if not impossible, for someone to predict. Nine, IX, two more down. Measures the owner will employ to secure the building to prevent access by trespassers, including at a minimum, the installation and repair and maintenance of adequate windows and doors, as well as at least one of the following, and then we go on to this list. And I think this sounds good on the surface, but it's almost like we don't know or are cognizant of what property owners are facing in Eureka, which is a high level of property crime. And windows being busted out, windows that are very costly. They run the risk of getting their insurance policies canceled if they file to replace those windows. And sometimes those windows require special orders and take some time to get, which is how we end up with plywood. I, you know, myself have been robbed three times. So I think this idea that people are not, like, maybe dealing with some of this stuff, I, again, I'm just, I'm concerned about putting this on there, because we're looking at two things. This is addressing both commercial and residential at the same time, which I think in and of itself is problematic. I almost think there needs to be two separate things here, and not, because we have two different reasons, we have two different things that are going on between commercial and residential. And so I just, the, these things still not being clear and defined, or, you know, asking people to kind of make predictions are going to be very difficult. You know, it's two different things. Trying to lease commercial real estate downtown that maybe needs upgrades is different than, you know, a home in my neighborhood that's set empty because maybe the bank has taken it back, or, you know, somebody inherited it and it's just sitting there. These are really different circumstances. Under nine, or IX on that same one, 098. Number two, employment of security officers to the satisfaction of the city. Self-explanatory, I think that that's going to be problematic as well. And then number four, under that same one, any other methods as specified by the city. I'm uncomfortable passing anything where we're not being very specific about what powers we're giving ourselves and what we're asking of code enforcement. So just the kind of, any other methods, kind of, I just am concerned about that. So those are my, my long list.
Thank you. Councilmember Maltin?
I just wanted to add to the conversation that in our two-by-two meeting with the Eureka Chamber of Commerce, they said that their Government Affairs Committee had reviewed the ordinance thoroughly and agreed. They did, they had reviewed before the introduction and took issue with some of the shorter timelines. But with these sorts of changes that we're looking at tonight with the longer timelines, they, the Chamber of Commerce Government Affairs Committee is in favor of this ordinance.
Thank you. Councilmember Fernandez?
I just have to say, as it's been substantiated, I think, by staff and at least by the intent of other members, that this doesn't obligate an owner to lease, sell, or rent their property. Rather, as long as they have a clean property and are in good faith attempting to rent, lease, or sell this, then they're imposed a monitoring fee. It's when they're trying to skirt this that it comes down to the fines, that it comes down to, I'm blanking on that word from my accounts, from my colleague, punitive, yes, thank you. And that's where we're at, and I know that we've talked about this previously, because I believe I asked at the last meeting, "Is there a carrot that we can offer in lieu of this heavy stick?" And the answer was, "Not, not really, not without getting creative or a larger amount of funds that we just don't have at the moment." That is something that we can investigate looking, and I believe it was something that was offered by one of the commenters, is maybe these funds go into our housing fund that we might be able to utilize, at least if not for commercial properties, then at least for people attempting to rectify some of the issues that they might have before they're able to place something on the market. I see the concerns with... Uh, I see the concerns with some of the vagueness of this, but in its totality, I'm amenable to this. My only issue still remains at the 60 day mark. And I know that's where we might disagree, at least between all of us. I know that there were some that wanted 120 days. We talked it back down to 90 and I still voted against that. I may still be at that point where I do that tonight, but I see this passing, uh, as it is.
Thank you. Councilmember Castellano.
Just to say that I also support, uh, use, using any funds generated or reinvesting any funds generated in housing or SEPTED or, um, other things that would support, you know, like local businesses, um, or beautification efforts.
Thank you. Councilmember Bauer.
Thank you. First, I just want to recognize City Attorney Luna, Economic Development Commission, and everybody who's, who's been involved in this. I, uh, I, I voted for it the first time and, you know, I'll have to say more of it just to bring up, to have a more of a discussion about it. I think it's an interesting concept, but being someone that craves data and, you know, as a scientist, I think data is important. I, I've done, I did a lot of research and I, and, and talked with people who I consider experts. And nobody could give me a good reason, a tax reason to, to keep a building vacant. Couldn't find it and I couldn't find an expert to tell me that, that, that's a reason. It's a, a tax avoidance thing. They couldn't tell me, you know, other than rent control, which we don't have. Some cities that have rent control, people will leave stuff vacant because they can't afford the, the, you know, the upgrades that are required under city ordinance, that kind of thing. Uh, we don't have that. And, and, um, so basically it doesn't seem to be a good reason other than economics. You know, people have a lot of buildings and they don't, um, see, really see the need to rent. But I don't know. I, um, I struggle with this a little bit now. And I, I think it would be great to have more data to understand, like, you know, why this is, why this happens? Why does it happen across the nation? We've had that, we've heard that from, I think I've said it and others have said it. You know, brick and mortar is changing. And I'm talking about the commercial component, not obviously the residential, but I'm just, I'm, I'm reticent to say that this will solve our problems and I, 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 I just don't know. And I, you know, I've heard great, um, comments from, from all the council members here about it, but I'm, I, I struggle with, is this the tool? We already have the ability to kind of deal with vacant, uh, buildings. Is this the tool that's going to change things? And I, I, I appreciate the business community that supports it. And I understand where, um, the side that doesn't support it. So I just, I'm just not sure now whether this is the tool that will change the nature of, of vacancies in Eureka. Thanks.
Thank you. Do we have any further comments? Councilmember Moulton.
I'd like to point out or, or just clarify, um, since this is a code enforcement, excuse me, since this is a code enforcement issue, uh, doesn't that mean that the whole process would need to be started by a complaint?
It typically is, but it doesn't need to be. It could be as simple as them coming in for a permit. And, I mean, there's different ways that we can find out, but it doesn't have to be done through that. I mean, our code enforcement, um, you know, somebody will come in and replace plumbing and then there's some other building code thing that's an issue from that and we find out through that. So it can't be other than complaints, but the majority of it is.
Something would have to trigger. There's not a code enforcement officer driving around the city looking for boarded up.
We are not going to be sending people around and having interviews and talking to people about their buildings. No.
I'm, I'm very concerned about folks who are, um, just allowing property to sit vacant, not because it's vacant, but when it is causing a problem for the rest of the community. And when I talk about public perception, when I talk about, um, tourists coming through on the 101, we talk about neighborhood pride. And if someone is simply leaving their property fallow, not to be used, that that is a disservice to the community as a whole. And I'm satisfied that all of the different levels that they have to get through before they're actually in trouble, would, um, uh, tell me that they are, um, at that point, you know, they're not trying to lease it. They're not trying to rent it or sell it. They're not trying to fix it up. They don't have a building permit out. They don't have extenuating circumstances. They don't have, you know, uh, something difficult going on that, that would give them an excuse for an extension or an excuse for, uh, some leeway. I, I feel like there, there's enough layers here that somebody would have to either ignore or flout or, um, just walk, just breeze past that I'd be, um, I want our code enforcement to have this, uh, the potential for an ordinance with some teeth at the far end of this process. It's not a, a short process. There's, there's many steps to get through before the teeth come into play. So I would move that we waive full reading, read by title only and adopt bill number 1038 dash CS. An ordinance of the City Council of the City of Eureka repealing and replacing Title 15, Chapter 150, Section 150 dot 095 through 150 dot 097, with Sections 150 dot 095 through 150 dot 100 pertaining to vacant, commercial, industrial and residential buildings.
Second.
I do have one particular question, comment. Perhaps you could comment on this. And when I was hearing that there is no tax benefit, I was thinking of this property that I've talked to you about, uh, City Manager Slattery across from Eureka High that is completely dilapidated and falling down, but because they pay a certain amount of money, there's no requirement to fix that property. Is that the case? And do we have many of those properties in our city?
I, I'm not a tax expert, so take this with a grain of salt, but I have owned income property before. And if you own income property, you can use it as a tax write-off if you're losing on that income property. At different levels, depending on where you're at, but yes, I, I don't know about that one. I would say, and Girvin can, Director Girvin, correct me if I'm wrong. A lot of them that are in that long fallow state for a long period of time are typically bank-owned. But yes, you can write off on income properties. Yes.
Well, for instance, this particular property that we've talked about, it's been a few years now. The business owner lives in New York or out of state. And that property, if you, if, is dangerous. I mean, it's right across from the high school. You can, kids can break right into it. But because this particular woman, person is paying the fees, there is no requirement to fix that property.
Correct. It's vacant and boarded at the time and it's deemed to be safe and not causing a public health and safety issue. And so therefore they just pay the ongoing fine. Yes.
That could sit there for 50 more years if, if, um, no one got hurt or if it didn't burn down or.
Under our current regulations. Yes.
Yeah. And we are in desperate need of housing. Just a little sidebar there. Councilmember Fernandez.
Sorry. Going back through this, I see the red lines that you've added, uh, Attorney Luna. And so I'm curious, I, I, I thought we had discussed last time about adding good faith language in there. And so, did I miss it? Yeah, I was just trying to.
B two on page two. Sorry.
There we go.
097 B two on page two.
That's all. Thank you.
So there's been a motion and a second. Please vote.
Councilmember Castellano.
Aye.
Three yes votes. Councilmember Bauer, Councilmember Contreras Deloche vote no. Motion carries.
Thank you. We will now move on to future agenda items. Councilmember Fernandez.
I know, uh, at the last meeting, it was a bit contentious given the appeal process. And I was wondering if we could have a review of that process and, uh, potential discussion about adding mediation before it comes to a full council appeal.
I assume this is related to the vacancy ordinance.
No.
No, I'm, I'm sorry. This is about the appeal process that was regarding developments.
The Bell Street.
I'll leave that up to Attorney Luna about mediation and whether or not that's possible.
I'm happy to look into whether or not there could be a change to our ordinance and what that might look like. Uh, you're talking about the design review process and specifically adding in some prior to moving up the line of appeal, having a city-led mediation of some kind. Is that, is that what you're suggesting?
Yeah.
Okay. Do we have, uh, other council members who are interested in that?
Thumbs up, thumbs down.
Okay. I'm happy to look into that possibility and come back with some, some options for the council.
She tried to unmute. Okay.
And thank you for bringing that forward.
Thank you.
Okay. Moving on to city manager reports.
Thank you, Mayor, and good evening, Mayor and Council. At a previous council meeting, it was requested by council to give a report on a grand jury report that came out related to behavioral, um, health, uh, at the county. The title of the grand jury report was Humboldt County Behavioral Health, Substance Use and the Streets: What Works? While this report wasn't necessarily about the city of Eureka, some of the examples used in that report, we were the example of what works. What does work for us is a combination of some of our social services programming, which includes Uplift, CSAT and CARE, our alternative response. But the, the majority of this was related to alternative response and what we had done. They talked about the, the old MIST program and what we are currently doing now. And so I had, um, Managing Mental Health Clinician Rosen work with, uh, CSAT, DPD and Uplift and, um, give kind of an, an, an idea of what they felt was working and, and where we're at with those programs and services. So welcome, Managing Mental Health Clinician Rosen.
Thank you, City Manager Slattery. Uh, good evening, Council and Mayor. So, uh, Kenaiz will notice that, uh, the title here is a bit of a riff off of the grand jury report. The grand jury report did look at all of Humboldt County. But we'll kind of focus in on what the city was doing that, uh, was highlighted and that's working and, uh, what we see as next steps. So just as a quick agenda, uh, we'll kind of talk about the report itself. For anyone who hasn't read it, highly recommend it. I think it had some really good insight. We'll also talk about kind of the magic ingredients here in Eureka and then we'll talk about those next steps. But first a summary. In reviewing the, the report reviewed, uh, mobile crisis services across the county. It did this through interviews. Um, it also looked at pulling data for those organizations. And so CARE, uh, CSAT and MIST. MIST is Mobile Intervention Services Team. Uh, that's the county's program. Um, and there's been multiple iterations of that program. So it looked at each of those iterations, um, individually. The report found that CARE and the original iteration of MIST, um, the version that was, uh, partnered with Eureka Police Department, were effective. And this, this next section I, I'm quoting, this is, I want to make clear that this is not my, my interpretation. But the grand jury report did find that the most recent iteration of MIST, uh, had unimpressive results. I will give the caveat that the county has revamped that program since then. Um, and as a result, it, it's just too new to really gather, uh, much data out of or, or gain any lessons from. Um, and the grand jury report acknowledged that. Some of the key findings, um, and again, this is kind of grossly summarized, but the key findings were, uh, calling for stable funding of such programs is critically important. Uh, when you're creating a program that is depended on by, uh, numerous members throughout the community, having something that is funded stably, uh, so that it can be a dependable, consistent program is incredibly important. Um, and then it also demonstrated the importance of data collection, especially in a rapidly evolving, uh, part of the mental health field, where we're really looking at the integration of mental health into emergency response. Collecting data and collecting it well, um, on all ends, whether that's law enforcement or mental health is incredibly important. Generally speaking, Eureka is on the right track. And I really want to focus in on three findings today, um, and they're findings one, two and three, uh, F1, two and three in the report. F1, uh, the Crisis Alternative Response of Eureka Program demonstrates a successful proactive model for compassionately providing Eureka with community-based, high-quality, easy-access mental health and substance use mobile crisis services. These services help people to, help people to live better lives and benefit everyone in our community. And so I really want to give a shout out to our staff, um, both, uh, in CARE, but also at Eureka Police Department, as well as Uplift, um, as they've all participated in that, um, in support of this program's growth. And, you know, i, in other times that I've been here, I've gotten up and talked about data, um, and thrown numbers at you. But there's a couple of ways that we can look at effectiveness. And so I thought tonight we might look at, uh, some qualitative data instead of quantitative. Cause sometimes it's good to talk about the stories and not the numbers. So as a result, I have prepared a specific statement. When sharing cases like this with mental health, uh, I usually go above and beyond in trying to protect individuals' information as such. I'm going to read specifically from the prepared statement. So as to not accidentally, uh, provide any revealing information, um, that may come out if I was doing it from memory. This individual was initially contacted, oh, let me read. So the kind of title this is, "From Negotiations to Employment." This individual was initially contacted by Eureka Police Department following them making suicidal statements in a local motel. This individual's situation had many risk factors for suicide, few protective factors, and they described feeling profound hopelessness. Due to the nature of the suicidal statements, Eureka Police Department was forced to balance both community safety as well as the wellbeing of this individual. While Eureka Police Department's tactical, tactical team maintained a safe perimeter, a Eureka Police Department negotiator and I spoke with the individual on the phone. After many hours of work, and I want to clarify, it was pouring rain and the tactical team was out in the rain for hours supporting this effort. And so kudos to them. This individual was able to safety plan for the night. The following morning, CARE followed up with this individual. CARE initially started with intensive case management as follow-up, but gradually drew down the volume of contact uh, as other connections were made. Tyler Jennings, one of our case managers, uh, made daily contacts the first week of services. In this time, Tyler was supportive of this individual in getting connected to housing supports and mental health and substance use treatment. Over time, this individual was also connected to employment supports as well. Through this individual's own hard work and the hard work of CARE's staff, our last contact with this individual was them calling to update Tyler on having achieved a major employment milestone and having moved into their own place. During working with this individual, they also left, uh, feedback. And that's this quote. This was submitted as, as part of CARE's internal feedback form. This is a great program and a great idea and well-needed. The program gave me a newfound hope and the motivation to drive on. I also want to thank Tyler for the extra mile. Oh, for going the extra mile for me. And so in looking at that first finding, um, you know, uh, again, we've talked about the numbers. And I, I look forward to being able to bring, uh, newer numbers soon. However, I think it's important to really look at how this touches individual people and wanted to really highlight that. So just a quick program update. Currently we have two case managers, um, and one mental health clinician. That clinician started, uh, uh, August 12th, um, and they're hitting the ground running and doing excellent. We're looking forward to bringing them up, up to speed and doing more work with them. We are interviewing for our third mental health case manager position tomorrow, um, and Friday, and are looking forward to filling that position. We've had some excellent candidates. CARE currently provides co-response Monday through Friday, 7:30 to about 6:00. And then I'm usually available after hours as needed. We do have some limited alternative response capacities. Um, we've slowed this rollout for a couple of reasons. Part of that is, uh, figuring out how HIPAA and the Criminal Justice Information System laws work together. Believe it or not, when they're designed years and years ago, they weren't intended for that. So, uh, there's, there's been some hiccups in trying to figure out how to, uh, make sure that the right people are getting the right information at the right times and that we're not oversharing certain information on either end. Um, and so we're still kind of evolving in that realm. Uh, the other issue, staffing and just making sure that, uh, you know, we have sufficient staff to provide a consistent, um, alternative response program. Moving on to findings two and three. When people are housed mentally stable and free of substance abuse, they use less community resources, resulting in significant savings to our community. And the civil grand jury's third finding, when people are housed mentally stable and free of substance abuse, they are more likely to con- stable and free of substance abuse, they are more likely to contribute financially to our community, resulting in economic stimulus in our community. And what I'd like to say is, Eureka's doing a lot of this already and doing a great job at it. Uplift Eureka is actively tackling most of those points and collaborating with Eureka Police Department and CARE to handle the other points that really aren't, that's meant to be in their wheelhouse. Using the housing-first principle, and, and I just want to say, Jeff and I talking about this today, sorry, project manager Davis, and I talking about this earlier, there are lots of data points that we could throw out there, so this is like just very much skimming the surface. But using housing-first principles, Uplift has housed with supportive services 202 people. Uplift has been awarded over $1.2 million just this year for supportive services and housing efforts, and that's not including the other grants that they've applied for, that it may still be coming down the pipeline, or the ones that they've been actively working on that are still active. Uplift's Pathway to Payday program this year has served 42 participants. And with those 42 participants, too, 55 job offers have come in, so that's, you know, more job offers than participants. And every one of those participants has at least gotten a second interview, which is fantastic. So really talking about that third finding where supporting people in crisis and with all their other needs can create healthy contributing members of the community, I think is really poignant. Uplift's Street Outreach Services support hundreds of people each week. Larry and Robert in particular are down at Free Mail all the time and all over the city and are helping tons and tons of people every day. And I really want to highlight, too, that before CARE was around, they functioned as kind of a CARE-light response. They, you know, were responding to assist individuals who were in crisis or, or, you know, at least in distress to support their needs before we were here. And really want to give a shout out to how well they did with that. Uplift and CARE collaborate frequently. When we have clients who are houseless, we can work with Uplift to get them referred to the right area so that they can be on a list or get, you know, connected to the right documents and resources to start moving in that direction. Uplift also works with us so that when they have an individual that they've housed who they're identifying needs mental health treatment or substance use treatment, then we jump in and can assist in guiding them to those resources as well. So I'm looking at all that. We kind of look at, well, what's the magic ingredient, right? What, what is making this work well? What is helping this really find, you know, the findings in the grand jury report, as well as our internal data? And that magic ingredient is Eureka Police Department. And the fact that they are willing to collaborate over and over and over again with anyone who's willing to come to the table. This is just looking at some common factors here, right? So MIST was identified as being successful in the grand jury report. Eureka Police Department was involved with that, right? This is the original iteration in 2015. Uplift and Eureka Police Department kicked off efforts in supporting the houseless population around the same time in 2018, right? So CSAT and Uplift came out in the same year and have worked closely together since. CARE wouldn't be here without Commander LaFrance and the many others who have really wanted to support this effort and move this program forward. And he could probably tell you that it's been longer than 2020 than he's been working on this, but it's really, this wouldn't be here without that collaboration. Eureka Police Department's patrol team has been incredibly inviting and, and warm in accessing our resource and kind of accepting us as being something that's, you know, reliable and effective. We have countless positive interactions with them every week, and it's really been heartwarming to see that kind of reception from the, the patrol team. Eureka Police Department's Communications Department has been integral in getting us integrated into police radio and the dispatching process. Eureka Police Department's School Resource Officers are, have worked with us since the beginning to respond to youth in crisis at schools. And their command staff continue to support us every week in moving our program forward. And last, they asked us to move in and we said yes. So we did that in January. And so we are currently housed in the waterfront annex with Eureka Police Department. So another piece of this is EPD's dedication to the crisis intervention team model. And the crisis intervention team has been around a long time. It's a national model. This is a gross simplification, but it's meant for law enforcement and mental health to be better providers in the field and to work better together to provide a better service to those in crisis. Just recently, our local CIT chapter went to the International Conference in Indianapolis. You'll notice of this group, five of the 15 people are city of Eureka staff, four from Eureka Police Department, and myself. This is something that Commander LaFrance and I have been really stepping up and assisting and supporting this program moving forward, especially as the county's been shorter-staffed and continuing to operate it. It's a pretty time-intensive program. But this really is collaboration-centered and really is moving in the direction of supporting our, our community better and in a way that's a little more, more community-driven. So I think the results of, and this is from my view, the results of that collaborative effort and the CIT involvement is a culture shift. There's a huge shift in, in moving to approach individuals, individuals with mental health and substance use presentations in a more compassionate fashion, as well as accepting mental health providers moving into this realm of community response. And as a result, our community can get a highly, highly skilled response for mental health crisis, even from Eureka's patrol officers, and with the ability to escalate to CARE and CSAT from there, which is super, super impressive. Eureka Police Department and the department's willingness to collaborate and evolve is the common factor in much of these successes. So our next steps. Funding for further expansion. We're continuing to work with county behavioral health, as well as look at other grant opportunities to continue to expand CARE's capacities, as well as other innovations in this kind of joint response area with law enforcement. Once staffed, and we problem-solve the remaining barriers to the alternative response, we want to implement that. And then eventually, we'd like to expand to seven-day-a-week coverage with longer hours so that we can have a more comprehensive response for the community. And with that, I'll take any questions.
Thank you. Do we have any questions? Councilmember Molton?
I don't have any questions, but I just wanted to say thank you for the presentation and thank you for the work that you're doing. And thank you to EPD for being the magic ingredient in this. Those frontline folks that are right there in the middle of the crisis and know who to call when. Just the, the collaboration is really impressive. When I, I'm tearing up. When I first landed in this county, I was doing outreach with youth on the streets, and I saw too many people run right up against a wall. And just to know that the work that the city's doing to remove those walls and to give people a hand up out of some really desperate times is exactly the kind of work I think we should be doing. Thank you.
Councilmember Bauer?
How'd you know? Did you see me moving towards the microphone? No, Jacob, I just want to thank you and, and EPD for compassionate, you know, care of, of people in crisis. And I, I mean, we, we hear a lot that, you know, that we have problems in our city and, you know, individuals, and this is how you address them, you know? It's not lock them up and, and throw away the key. These are people that need help, compassionate help from other human beings. So thank you and everybody who's involved, Uplift. I mean, we're doing great stuff. Keep up the good work. We all support you. Thanks.
Thank you.
Councilmember Fernandez?
Thank you. Thank you for the presentation. And, and from my understanding, you know, staff for, for the various programs have plethora of experience, both academic and lived experience. And then you made mention of going to a conference, and so I was curious what type of ongoing education you all have, or what it is that you, you take from those conferences that we're potentially implementing.
Absolutely. So the Crisis Intervention Team International Conference happens every year, and at those conferences, they have like course schedules, and so there's usually multiple courses offered at a time. This year and last year, when I attended, we were looking more, or I was looking more for information on developing integrated mobile crisis teams, looking at models where other cities have implemented mental health into their police departments at multiple levels, whether that's having social workers and dispatch to assist with taking, taking crisis calls and diverting some of those calls from ever having to be a call for service in the first place, to co-responder teams, to independent alternative response teams, and really looking at the development, the data tracking, and the, the grant writing to support the development of those programs. With regards to training on the, the ground level for our staff, with the mobile crisis benefit that the state rolled out earlier this year, it also rolled out a training regimen for that. And so there's probably, I don't remember the exact amount, it's 70 to 80 hours worth of, of training specifically geared towards mobile crisis responders, which has been great because it's really standardized what the, the training expectation is across the state. And all of our staff are, have either completed that training regimen, or in the case of our new staff, are in the process of completing that training regimen. And this is in addition, then, to the local CIT 40-hour training, which Eureka is a huge part of, both in planning as well as putting on. We've done that twice now at the Werfenger Building, and that's the 40-hour training that multiple police departments come to, as well as multiple behavioral health agencies. Thank you.
Councilmember Contreras Deloche?
Well, I just quickly wanted to say thank you first to you guys, too, for thumbs up being this, when I was like, hey, could we, you know, have them come and present on this? And thank you, Jacob, for, oh, well, anyway, thank you for coming and doing this presentation. I just, I, you know, this is something I was marginally aware of what the city was doing prior to my election, and then have become so much more aware of all the work that you guys are involved in and all the different things. And it's so remarkable to me that such a small city is doing so much in this area, and it is unique. It's truly unique. And, and it's entirely because of you guys and, you know, Commander LaFrance and these different people who have, you know, organized this. And I, I think it's, it's really something, just to kind of see how you guys have created this warm, I don't know, I think like this, trying to kind of wrap people in a warm blanket, like this sense of safety and trying, and sense of community and to kind of make people feel as though there's a net and that people care about them. So I just, you know, I frequently brag on our staff here because, you know, you get to know people and you think, wow, these people are awesome. But I just deeply appreciate all of you guys and what you're doing. And I think what I know that you guys have taxing and exhausting jobs. I am deeply appreciative that you get up every day and do this because of what you're doing for all of these people in this vulnerable situation. It really is very meaningful, and I'm just very appreciative of all of you.
Thank you.
Just looking to see if there's anybody on Zoom. It doesn't look like. So I guess I'll share a few comments myself. You know, when I first came on council, there were, you know, I spent a lot of time in the marsh, and there was a lot of talk of tent slashing and, you know, taking people's stuff and, you know, all the things that you would, you know, back in those days, were going on all over the place, not just locally. And I just, I, I am so proud of our department for the level that they have turned it around. I mean, you know, back then, too, there were, had there been shootings, there'd been all kinds of things. And the level that, that our, our police department and our teams have put together to increase, what did I write, mutual respect and dignity with each other has been incredible. And if you get an opportunity and you just happen to be out in the public and you see these engagements, you'll be blown away. Like, you know, people hate cops, and yet, and yet, you go to Free Mail or you see some of these folks down engaging with the police, and they're like buddies, right? They're like, you know, having good conversations. How are you? How's your, you know, this? How's your that? And, and what a gift that is, that connection. That connection is so critical in bringing people together and their willingness to take the support and the, the help that they need. And I, I am so grateful and so proud of our city and our staff for being willing to be innovative and creative and make these things move forward as rapidly as we have, and for all the successes that we have been having. And I just hope that we stay on this trajectory because what we're doing is incredible. And if you stay past public comment, you can hear presentations like this and you'll be able to understand that there's a lot of great work happening in our city, and I appreciate all of you that are engaged in that. And there are so many of you. And the last thing is, you know, it's true, like even officers who aren't CSAT have great relationships with people, you know? I mean, not, I mean, of course, they have great relationships with the people, but I'm talking about people that are vulnerable and that have had problems in the past. There's a mutual respect there that we didn't used to have eight or nine years ago, and I just, I'm so thankful because that is how we make those positive connections and changes. So huge, huge, huge appreciation to all of you, 100%. Let's keep going. Stay the course. Any other comments? No, this is a report. You can do this. You can do this. Okay. So with that, we're going to move forward to, again, thank you. We're going to move forward to, usually we take a break at this point, but I think we're just going to go ahead and do council reports. Sound good, guys? Okay. Councilmember Castellano?
Oh, gosh. Sorry. I attended the ribbon cutting for the new Eureka visitors. Well, it's been established, but it's becoming an official California Visitor Center. And I...
Thank you.
Is everything okay? Anyway, sorry, I wasn't ready to speak, and that's okay. I don't need to make a long report today.
Okay. Thank you. Councilmember Contreras Deloche?
Yeah, I, I also attended the Welcome Center Grand Opening, the California Visitor Center ribbon cutting. And as usual, was very careful to make sure I avoided any photographs. But I have good pictures of all of you. And then I also attended the Organized Labor Day picnic. And then I went to the Humboldt County Fair. I took my little guy to that. And, and I can't remember if Pathway to Payday was in this last two weeks or the previous two weeks. Everything is kind of fused together. It was a previous one. I already reported on it. I'm reporting on it twice. Okay. Well, I really love it that much. So that's my report.
Thank you. Councilmember Bauer?
Thank you. I got to chair my first Redwood Coast Energy Authority meeting, which was exciting. I attended Chief Robertson's celebration, and I know he's watching. We miss you. Appreciate all you've done for this community. I also attended the Organized Labor Day picnic, which was great. And Friday Night Market was booming. Everybody was there, but loved going to that and, and, and seeing everybody in the community. And I think that's it. Thanks.
Thank you. Councilmember Fernandez?
Thank you, Mayor. I had previously missed a two-by-two with the chamber, but I was able to follow up with the executive director, Nancy Olson. And while it's already been touched on, they were accepting of the vacancy ordinance, but seemed to be more impressed that it was a 90-day limit that had been amended. We had a two-by-two with the school district with Councilmember Molton and their, their two trustees. Very in-depth conversation about Jacobs, along with some of the ordinances we're working on here with the city. I had to miss most of the Redwood Region Economic Development Commission because I had to travel out of town again for medical care, but I did have the opportunity to attend the Organized Labor, Labor Day picnic just yesterday as well. And then, as it's already been mentioned, you know, Friday Night Market this last week, the last one, at least for the season, was very much a blowout. It was fantastic.
Thank you. Councilmember Molton?
Thank you. Thank you for waiting for me to compose myself. I'm fine. I don't have any travel-to report, but I also attended the Organized Labor Day picnic. It's great to see so many people out there from so many different industries, folks talking about growing our local economy from the ground up. It's great to see so much solidarity. I attended Chief Robertson's city goodbye dinner, and I was sad to see him go. He's been a pleasure to work with, but I do welcome Chief Citro. I was part of the Personnel Committee that, or part of the, the board deciding to hire him. And I'm just really impressed with him as candidate and look forward to seeing what you're like as a chief. And then the Personnel Committee, I met with negotiating Chief Citro's contract. The Eureka City Schools two-by-two, we talked about Jacobs, as Councilmember Fernandez stated. I'm really appreciating the very strong collaborative relationship between Eureka City and the Eureka City Schools, especially when it comes around sharing facilities, you know, just making sure that the, the kids have a great place to be. making sure that the, the kids have a great place to be, whether they're doing school activities or city-sponsored activities like Hoopster, stuff like that. And just that the, you know, there's just an ongoing collaboration and communication happening. I attended the school board meeting. I made public comment as a, just a regular citizen, and they have agreed, they decided to go ahead and have a survey of the students in the neighborhood because they have these wonderful communication lines open with families and students. So they decided to do a survey of the students and families at Alice Burney Elementary around the Jacobs campus and what folks in the neighborhood would like to see there to add that into their deliberations for whom they decide to sell that property to if they do decide to sell it. I would like to address I was accused of an actual crime a little while ago that I have never and would never suggest that anyone falsify ballots. One vote per, per person, folks. And if you're curious what I was talking about, I'm easy to find on social media. And that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. Well, with that, I just want to remind everybody that this is the silly season. This is an election year. We got an election coming up shortly. Please be kind to each other. We don't have to agree, agree to be respectful. Thank you. We're adjourned.